Going to be out for the next couple of weeks. So. We won't have her with us tonight. Melissa in Boston. Everybody know who Melissa in Boston might be? I hear, John, that your historical meeting got zoom bombed last night.
Yeah, it did. Brian Sekely did something to shut it all down very quickly, but.
Yeah.
I.
Tell me, I. Um, forgive me, uh, tell me, uh, what does that mean?
Uh, it means that an uninvited guest shows up and starts to do obnoxious things, which could mean, uh, showing pornographic images, being disrespectful or interrupting or trying to mislead the conversation.
Oh.
It can be quite annoying. So we have, uh, so Kurt has joined us. So why don't we, I will admit Melissa in Boston and we'll see who Melissa is. I no longer seem to be able to message people in the waiting room, so. Okay. And. Hi, uh, the person whose screen name is Melissa in Boston, could you identify your plus yourself, please? Now, we'll see whether or not they. Okay, why don't we, uh, why don't we begin? Uh, let me click on record here. Record to the cloud.
Recording in progress.
Uh, welcome everyone to the, uh, May 24th, 2022 Winchester Planning Board Meeting. Uh, we are being recorded on Zoom as well as, uh, by Wind Cam. We're also being broadcast live via Wind Cam. Uh, if you do not wish to appear on the recording, please turn off your video and your voice. Uh, your audio. We have a quorum here tonight, so why don't I do a roll call vote? Let's see Kurt Spring.
Here.
Uh, Sally Dale.
Here.
Nick Rosettos.
Yeah.
And Dejarius is here as well. That's me. I'm the chair. Our other board member, Eaching Scott, will hopefully show up later. Let me see, I'm going to share my screen. Let's see if that works. Hopefully you can see the screen. I have a problem sometimes where part of my screen gets cut off, so now let me know if that is an issue. So, uh, today we have a very short opening meeting and approval of minutes. Uh, then we have a discussion with a developer for nine ten Main Street. Most people know it as Sakura. The Japanese restaurant on North Main Street. We have a, uh, discussion with some residents about a leaf blower. Warrant for town article, a leaf blower, um, regulations. We are going to be discussing, uh, what's happening with the mess plan implementation committee. We have a subdivision closeout. Uh, for. Lockwind Loring Court. Uh, we'll be going over our revisions to the town planner position description, and then finally, we'll be talking about outreach and education from the planning board to the community. So, um. The only update I have very quickly is that, um, the chair of the select board, uh, Rich Mucci, has, uh, offered to come before, uh, the planning board next Tuesday, May 31st, when we will be discussing the waterfield proposal. Um, so, uh, thank him for that. Um, and are there any other, uh, updates from the board? And I can't see all of you, so just shout out. And I'm guessing not. Okay, uh, so why don't we very quickly go through our, uh, meeting minutes? We have two sets of minutes to go through. Um, let's see. Uh, our first is, uh, April 12th, 2022. Uh, are there any comments on this?
Sally Dale has her hand up.
Yeah, Sally, go ahead. I can't see all of you right now.
I just realized, um, so I have, um, a comment, maybe an edit on page one under B Chair Jarius and then the third bullet down.
Yep.
So, uh, invitations have been sent to boards and committees who will be participating in selection of members. So the master plan implementation committee, AMPIC, description of the member also will be posted soon. This is a two-step process period, and I wanted to clarify there that, the first step is to set up the four selection committees composed of. Well, like just, and then the second step is to, um, have them choose the 10 members. So, or, or eight of the 10, and I just wanted to explain just in a very brief way what the two steps were.
Okay, I think that's very reasonable. Any other?
Um, and then, um, on page. Three. Um, under number four, planning board spring, planning board report, spring town meeting, multi-unit developments, subsidized housing inventory, slide four of 13. And, and I don't remember what we finally said, but in this second bullet, it refers to us having the 4.9 subsidized housing in, in inventory. And for some reason, I'm kind of confused about this, but I think that that expired and we're back to a one point something.
I, I, I think there is, um. I don't know if there was a dropping of numbers. Uh, I think there may have been, uh. At the time, we believed it to be 4.9, so.
Right.
Subsequently, I think there's been some back and forth between Brian and DHCD about the actual numbers.
Okay, and then that, so let's just leave it for now. And then on the fourth page, um, under number five warrant articles, the fifth bullet, um. I was just curious about, uh, let's see, warrant article, Ms. Scott, fifth bullet, understand that the town implicitly committed to maintaining this structure when it purchased the Sandborne State. And I was so curious to know when that is, and we could insert into the minutes in 1969. And then we will all know that.
And that. Yes, unfortunately, though, we did not comment. We did not make that statement at.
That's true. That's true. There I go again. Okay, those are all I have.
Okay, thank you. So.
Nancy's away. Do you, do you want me to make this edit in this document?
Uh, no, what I would suggest you do is that you send Nancy your edits and then she will, and she will implement them.
I shall do so.
Um, so is there a, oh, I have to admit someone. Hold on one second. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday, April 12th, 2022?
They moved.
Uh, thank you, Kurt. Uh, is there a second?
I can second.
Okay, so with seconds. And a roll call vote, please. Uh, Nick.
Hi.
Uh, Sally.
Hi.
Uh, Kurt.
Hi.
And Debs's eye as well. Thank you much. Uh, now moving on to, um. April 12th, 2022, those meeting minutes. Um, are there any?
Isn't, isn't that the ones we just did?
Did we just do 12 for 22? I'm sorry.
April 12th.
Okay, well then, oh, I'm sorry. I'm going backwards instead of forwards. There we go. There are May 20th, May 10th, sorry.
Uh huh.
May 10th. Are there any comments on here?
Um, on one, A, it's Ms. Jones.
Uh, good point. That is, that is, uh. Marty Jones. Um, okay.
Um, and then. On page four, number four, Washington Swanton, um, Chair Jarius, the second sentence says the town took the property for affordable housing by eminent domain. And I know it took it technically, but shouldn't we say, um, that we purchased it for affordable housing through eminent domain? Because it, it sounds to me like we just took it and didn't pay for it. But I, I know that's not what that means. It just sounds that way. Page four, number four.
Yeah, I'm trying to see where in number four you're talking.
Oh, the very first, where it says Chair Jarius, right after the header. So, right there, so Chair Jarius and then provided.
Took the property by eminent domain. I, um. We could cert, I mean, it is a taking legally, so we could.
Um, right.
I think.
But I wanted to say that we purchased it, um, through eminent domain, so that it would know that there was money involved, which I guess everybody knows, but.
I, I think by def, by that legally, you, you have to provide, um, just compensation when you take a property.
Right.
So, um, if you can, you know, I don't, I don't have.
I can give that to Nancy. That's no trouble. And then the, and under Mr. Zakali, and then it says, planning board comments. Um, concern that the design review committee needs to comment on prior to issuing the R F.
Yes, yes.
That's what I said.
Yep.
Um, and then, uh, that's it.
Okay, um, and one of these documents, my name was misspelled, but I've already forgotten where it was, but that doesn't matter.
That's right. We'll find and fix the spelling of, which was Deab or Jarius.
Jarius, that's okay. I've had worse misspellings in my life. Um, okay, so do I have a motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday, May 10th, 2022?
So moved?
Okay, thank you, Sally.
Second.
Second, that was Nick. A roll call vote, please, Kurt.
I think, do I abstain because I was absent?
Oh darn. Yes, you do abstain. My apologies. Uh, so Kurt abstains. Uh, Nick.
Hi.
Uh, Sally.
Hi.
And Deab, I as well, so that is all done. Thank you very much. Okay, um, at this point. Uh, let's go to our next. So we'd like to now segue into a discussion of, uh, nine, 10 Main Street. Um, so. I just want to say before we begin that I live on 26 Canal Street, which is approximately 170 feet from the property. Um, so there may be a question as to whether or not I should accuse myself. I have, I filed a form with the town clerk this, this afternoon, indicating that I believe that I can, uh, remain objective in this matter, that I don't have any financial. Interests in the property and that I don't believe that any financial impacts to my house would result from any search of development on that property. So, um, with that, why don't we, um. We have, uh, with us, let's see, who do we have with us from the development team? I think, uh. Mr. Anthony Moreno, you are here. Hello, Ms. Moreno.
Can you hear me?
Uh, I can hear you now. Thank you.
Okay.
So, uh.
Yeah, can you close your share screen or do we need to see?
I'm going to ask, uh, Ms. Moreno, are you going to be, uh, sharing it or shall I show your, your?
Would you mind sharing it, Chairman?
I will try because sometimes my computer does not. Work. Okay, so the background on this is there is an existing property on there. Um, as, let me bring up the, um. The town planner had a very short, um, description, so why don't I bring that up in the, uh. Too many windows. Okay, so hopefully everyone can see this. So, uh, to just to read what Mr. Sekely said, the potential applicant, Anthony Moreno, has a purchase and sales on the property at nine, 10 Main Street, where there's an active restaurant. It's a documented historic resource. A demo delay was put on the property. That delay has expired. Uh, due to the size of the property and the GBD two, all developments on the site would require site plan review. Um, Ms. Moreno has come before the board before, a couple of years ago. Uh, in order to discuss the property and he's coming back before us again this evening, uh, with further developments. At the time, after Ms. Moreno came before the planning board back in 2020, uh, the planning board authored a letter to the Winchester Historical Commission. Um, with the planning board, uh, stated its concern with the demolition of the building, noting that it was a historic property and that the board was in favor of development, which, um, maintained the existence of that property and integrated it into whatever, um, was done to the property. Um, so I note that, uh, we also have with us this evening, uh, Mr. John Clemson from the, um, historical commission. So, um. The options as laid out by the town planner in terms of what is possible on the site are to rehab the existing building, to rehab the existing unit, building with mixed use and four residential units, which would require site plan review. We have the building expanded to more than four units, which would require a special permit because it would not be by right. Uh, to demolish the building and create new mixed use or housing, that would require a special permit or coming in, uh, through the, uh, the state 40B law uh, to build and through the accelerated special permit process. So, um. Does the planning board have any quick questions now? And please just go ahead and, uh. Shout out if you do.
Well, the one first question I have is, did you mention, um, that Mr. Moreno has something he wants to present to us?
Yes, yes, I just, this is, I just wanna, yes, we're about to move into the presentation, but.
Oh, I see. So before that.
Before that, just in case there are any, um, if there's any confusion over, went into very quickly.
Yeah, no, I, I just, uh, I, my. I mean, my belief is that, I mean, developers are extremely, extremely important. Our growth as a community. Uh, being new to this whole process, uh, having started, uh, a few months ago, I'm hopeful and optimistic that we're all going to be on the same side of the table. Um, you know, just knowing that we're all uh, have Winchester's best interests at heart. Uh, we love the town. We love the, the look and, uh, we want to do something that, uh, we're all in together. Uh, so I'm hoping that we can be, uh, partners and come up with a, uh, a, a resolution that, um, works, that we can get to yes somehow, uh, for all parties. So, uh, but I'm definitely eager to hear the, the presentation.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Moreno, which document would you like to have presented first?
We have, um, several photos of the existing building. It might be helpful to look at at those under the iCloud photos. Gives us a little color of the existing property. You, you're very much aware of it, Chairman.
Okay, so.
But maybe other people aren't.
Yeah, can everyone see this photo?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Chairman, would you mind scrolling through these?
Sure. Whoops.
I appreciate it. Vinyl siding, you know, a lot of, uh, economical renovations over the past many years. Let's get chickens in the.
Can I just make a point?
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, these are all very unflattering photos. Um.
Uh, it's an flattering building.
Uh, it's a, it's an 1860s Italianate home. Uh. Are, are you from here, uh, Mr. Moreno?
Yeah, I, I grew up in Winchester.
You did. So, so what happened? I mean, how did you lack, how did you not have an appreciation for the historic architecture?
Um, I, I'm, I'm not seeing it right here, but I, I, um.
I don't, I don't want to be antagonistic. I, I apologize.
Yeah, could, uh, Nick, can we just, um, get through the presentation and then just, and just go that way? Okay, we're seeing a lot of, uh, are, are we just gonna continue seeing more duplicated pictures here or are we about done?
I just took a bunch of them, of the existing structure around the building.
Okay.
Particular order. That's pretty much it.
Mr. Moreno, can you, can you, um, tell us, um, your thoughts about the building itself and, and your thoughts about the property?
You know, a lot of, uh, economical renovations have made, been made over the years. Uh, usually, uh, done with just cost in mind, uh, a lot of vinyl, a lot of, you know, things that don't do the property any justice. Uh, over the years, the building has aged quite a bit. It's a stone foundation. It leaks quite a bit in the basement. Um, the rooms are on the small side, on the inside. Uh, structurally, n- not great these days. That'd be a, it'd be a, um, be a hard building to renovate, not very economical. But, uh, you know, it's there and he's maintained it as best as he can. The prior owner really didn't do a lot to it either. So the building has aged quite a bit and there's a lot of deferred maintenance currently. Um, not in its best condition.
It's, so that said, that said, is, is, is that the, the, the reason that, um, one of the options on this document is to demolish the building? Or the, the Brian Zakali's briefing to the board?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure where that option came from. I'm, I'm sure it's maybe because it's a, a possibility for some developers, but for me, it wouldn't be.
I, I, I mean, I don't know if that's the elephant in the room or what, but I would like very much to only have us talk about, if, if we use Brian's briefing document, um, just as, as, as a trampoline for discussion. Um, the options about rehabbing the building. Deab, go ahead. Sorry.
Yeah, I just, so, so we have, we have a presentation from the developer. And I understand the board is, is interested in just, I, I think it might, can we, can we just have that presentation go through it's to its completion? And then I think we can dive in. I think that we need to see the whole picture of what's before us.
Um, agree.
And then we can have plenty of time to discuss this.
So there's a couple of, uh, new construction options, Chairman.
Okay, so which, which document would you like to see next?
Let's, let's look at the, uh, the 40B option. Which, uh, by the way, the, the plan, my plan here is to not condo these. These would be apartments. And, uh, they would stay as apartments. Um, so a 40B option, which is, I think a good option, would, uh.
So, 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 Mr. Moreno, just so you know, that none of the other members of the board have seen your previous presentations.
Sure.
So just, I'm the only person who is still on the board from 2020.
Okay, all right. So we'll look at both of them. Does it matter which order we go in, Chairman?
I, I, why don't we start with, uh, we'll start with the 40B because that's what you've requested and everyone sees the whole screen.
I can see it.
Okay, thank you. For some reason, sometimes people only see parts of my screen.
Sure. So this particular one, uh, like the other option, um, would have siding, would have, would have some traditional elements. Uh, including the windows, the, the moldings, the trim, the, the roof line, kind of a throwback to uh, the existing building, that, that roof style. Um, we did incorporate parking behind that brick elevation there. There is a small lobby of about 1,500 feet, which, uh, uh, is generous in size. Um, but the remainder of that 10,600 square foot site uh, is the needed, um, setbacks and really everything else on that first level is parking. Parking and a couple of stairways, a couple of different bike racks, an electric car charging station. Um, and the only in, interior space is in that lower left-hand corner, which is a lobby elevator and, um, uh, entrance area of coming from Maine and also canal. As you can see, the, the entrance and exit is on the Canal Street side. Didn't, I didn't, I wasn't excited about putting parking entrance and exits in the front of the building. Uh, I thought maybe a creative idea would be able to, uh, have tenants leave the building by only taking a left on Canal onto Main, not going down the street, trying to avoid a bit of traffic going down Canal. But there's 11 parking spaces there. Like I said, two bike racks, couple of stairwells, one elevator shaft, a car charging station in the lobby.
And this is for 15 units?
That would be for 15, but I think in a 40B scenario, uh, we would have to modify that because, uh, I think statutorily we, we would require some twos and threes as well, not just one bedrooms.
Okay, so this is a single, these are all one-bedroom units?
Correct.
Okay.
Under the current plan, but under a 40B plan, I don't think that would work. We'd have to make some twos and threes in there as well. We would probably make the number of units, uh, come down a bit.
Okay.
Un- unless we, we, uh, went up a story, but the building is already big, so we're trying to be careful on, on the size. Um, this is three stories above the parking, so four in total. We're still at, um. If I can read this correctly. We're at 55 feet.
Okay, you've got 48, 45 feet right up to here.
Right.
According to this. Okay.
So we've, we've tried to incorporate some architectural elements that are not cheap, but made to be attractive and add to the overall, um, beauty of the area.
Who is the architect, by the way?
McKay, out of McKay Architects in Denver.
I, I, in, in all fairness, I have to say that this particular design is, uh, it's got a lot of nice elements.
Yeah, I appreciate that. He does a beautiful job. He has a long, long history of, uh, some beautiful architecture and, uh, I'm not patting myself on the back. I usually give him the credit. I asked him to design something that would be attractive, not necessarily more inexpensive, because I certainly could propose that, but I don't wish to. I wish to add something to the area.
The use of the mansard roof, I think, is, uh, certainly a, a winner, uh, the full gable. Um, and I, you, you're probably aware that we're undertaking an entire uh, plant for the entire North Main Street area and, uh, I mean, I would imagine that we're going to have a lot of opportunities for this kind of work.
I hope so. I hope to be a part of it.
I will, uh, I'll go on mute now.
So are there any questions for me on this particular design? This clearly would require a, uh, a 40B route, which, uh, I think is a good option, but not necessarily the only option either. Chairman, if you want to pivot to the, uh, smaller plan, and by the way, I've met with some of the neighbors. Deab, I have not met with you personally. I look forward to doing that, getting your opinions, because you are a neighbor. Your, your opinion matters to me. Uh, uh, but so far I've met with a few neighbors, um, and I've got several more to meet with. But, uh, at this point, um, in all honesty, this current plan in front of you has been the overwhelming favorite, which is smaller. I don't believe would be a 40B, uh, route. Um. I think, uh, it, it does have the same footprint. That's number one. It has the same parking situation. The stairwells, the bike racks, the electric truck, target, uh, charging station, same brick elevation there, same entrance and exit on Canal, but a much smaller building. But a much smaller building, I think equally possibly a little bit more delicate in its, in its presentation. And it's, in its architectural lines, also done by, by Mike McKay. He added a residential feel and a little bit more, I think a little more elegant, if that's the right word. Then plan number one, this one would be 10 units, five on top of five, all one bedrooms. I wouldn't need necessarily a 40B option on this one. I think we could avoid that. But I certainly would imagine some affordable element in this particular plan. The units range, under its current, under the current plan, with six 850 square foot one bedrooms and four 980 square foot one bedrooms. So medium to, 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 to large one bedrooms, but certainly a huge demand in Winchester. We, we get a lot of calls every rental season for one bedrooms and we just don't have enough to fill the requests. We just don't. So I believe smaller units and addressing the needs of some older neighbors here that would love to stay in Winchester and would like a nice new place to go with a spot to park. This would satisfy that call and new people coming to town, coming to town that don't necessarily need a four-bedroom, five-bedroom house. Something small to just get into town and experience what we all love about Winchester. But there, I, I feel good about both designs. I'm listening to the neighbors so far and I reiterate, I'm not done talking to the neighbors. I want to talk to probably another 15 or 20 and get the overall consensus. But right now, it's an overwhelming favorite, this particular one. I can see why. It's smaller, it's a bit more delicate and I think just as attractive, maybe, maybe more, because it's not so big. It's not so overpowering. Just for me, or anyone else?
I'm sorry, what did you say, Mr. Marina?
Any questions for me? I'm happy to answer them. Anybody?
I, I just wanted to point out that because we do have inclusionary housing in the zoning for GBD3 that one of these units, so 10% of the units must be affordable at some level. So at 10 units, one of these units would have to be restricted affordable.
Yeah, I think that's, that's fine. That would be very doable under the current plan and its economics.
Okay, do you have anything else you wanted to present to the board?
No, these are the options. And I, I will say, some developers will come in, I think, on certain parcels up North Main and try to build something economical and less attractive. Spend less money and make more money. My goal is to have something built that, that I can be proud of, that will add to the community. Address some of the real estate needs of, of some of our neighbors and new neighbors. But definitely not, I'm not looking to build the cheapest product. These would be a little bit more upscale than the average one bedroom. And it's designed to be so. I'm looking to create something better than what we have there, a lot better.
Okay, thank you. So why don't we, since this isn't really, we're just, I, I think Mr. Marina is just trying to get a feel for where the board lies on this. And we are running a little bit behind schedule. So why don't we just go around the board? And if everyone can take a couple of minutes to express their thoughts, their concerns, and if there are any questions. And let's, hopefully we can wrap this up in about, let's say by 7:45. And I apologize to the leaf blower people who are supposed to be on, we're going to have to. And then we'll get some questions and any comments from, I know there are a number of butters here. And certainly we'd like to hear from the historical commission on this. So who would like to go first? Sally, go ahead, please.
So I think that the buildings that Mr. McKay's firm designed are not at all unattractive buildings. But they don't take into account the restoration and preservation of one of Winchester's most historic buildings. And part of the whole vision and mission, not mission, but vision of the Winchester 2030 master plan is development while we honor and preserve important historical structures in town, and this is one of them. So much as I think that Mr. McKay did a good job designing a building, two buildings in fact. I don't think that we should tear down this building to achieve the housing accomplishments that your designs would produce. I think we should work with the building that we have to add to the diversity and quality of housing in Winchester. Including adding on to that building. And so if I understand correctly from Brian's memo, he, he said you were approaching the board to determine what is most palatable. Which is a funny word, but at any rate, I assume it means the, what we think would be the most appropriate and easy for us to permit. And I don't really want to see a design that doesn't preserve the building. So that's my feedback.
Sally, do you have, Sally, I'm like how you could envision, I'm just curious if you have a vision for it, like how you preserve the existing structure and the integrity of it. Yeah, just one second. I'm just, I just wanted to ask you one question. So how do you envision preserving what you just showed in the photograph while expanding and utilizing and adding more density to the site? Because it sounds like you're open to expansion and adding on while preserving the building. I'm just kind of curious how you think a developer, I guess, accomplishes that.
Well, I would say that I am not an architect, but I do believe that it's possible to restore the exterior of this building. And to add on to it, I'd have to look at the site plan and understand exactly what the possibilities would be. But that's what preservation architects do. And I would certainly welcome Mr. McKay taking an attempt, a stab at using this building. And you, you said, Mr. Marina, that the rooms are small, so it's possible the interior renovations with the proper structural improvements could make larger rooms. But the main thing would be to restore and preserve this beautiful old building that is part of Winchester's heritage. It's not visible right now. It's hidden by the siding. But I think it's entirely possible with creativity and skill to renovate and expand and address housing needs in our town. And this is a really, really pivotal intersection. It says, it, it tells a story about Winchester at a major intersection in our town.
My, my sense is that the North Main Street corridor.
One sec, Nick. Sally, are you done with your comments?
Um, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Nick, please.
You know, the North Main Street corridor, the, the lower and the upper is a fairly large swath of lots and existing structures, a lot of which need to be torn down and new buildings put in their place. I'm not sure this is the ideal lot. It, it seems a little bit. It seems like the wrong lot. It's sort of, if, if you look at North Main, it's kind of the jewel in the crown of the historic preservation interest in the entire. I would, I, I can't think of another building that's of more interest historically than this particular one in the lower and the upper. I mean, if you've got a lot of these square cinder block buildings. I mean, when I moved to, to New York City and lived there for a while and would drive out to Long Island, you'd see, you know, miles and miles of these cinder block buildings. And when I come back to Winchester, I was, you know, I, I got goosebumps when I saw the buildings again. And you know, it just seems like it's the wrong lot. I mean, maybe we can work together to find the right lot, to find a buyer, a sympathetic buyer. Somehow end up all smelling like roses and, and get through this as a community. But that's, I guess that's my gut reaction. I, I realized that, that I'm coming in a little bit, a little bit new. And not having had the benefit of all the previous discussions, but that's sort of how I'm feeling at, at the moment. You know, looking at it as a, as, as an entire project, not just one lot, but as an entire section of Winchester that we're working on. I mean, those designs, I mean, particularly the first one was so in tune with some of the architectural elements. It would really be nice to see some of that work done. I, I mean, I'd love to see it integrated within some, you know, portion of this corridor.
Okay, thank you. Kurt.
Sure, I guess I'm, I'm maybe a little bit, I guess I may be straddling the line a little bit here. I mean, I think that I, I really appreciate historic architecture and I, I can see some older pictures of this building online. I mean, it's, it's a, it is a beautiful building and a great example of, you know, Italianate architecture. I mean, there's a lot of great elements to it. I think the thing I struggle with is that in its current form, I, I think it's an eyesore. And it's a real disappointment to drive by it every day and, and see the current condition. And so my fear is, I'm not sure that there's an economical outcome that includes preservation unless you find a nonprofit or someone who is just preservation focused and they're just doing it for the sake of the building. And I think that's a needle in a haystack buyer. So I think that preventing development here and perhaps there is a creative solution that keeps the building. I'm a little bit skeptical, given a lot of the developable land is in front of it and to the side of it. So it seems like any plan to expand it would involve building onto it in a way that I feel like people who are in favor of preservation will not like. So it, it strikes me as challenging. I think the worst situation would be for this building to just look like this in 30 years and not change at all. I think it would just be an underutilization of the site. So I guess I'm a little conflicted on it, to be honest. And I think, as Nick pointed out earlier, we're in the middle of doing, you know, a study for North Main Street that we're going to get some insight on, on how, you know, we should think about, you know, zoning for this entire strip and what it looks like and what density should be, what parking and heights and, you know, character should look like. And so frankly, it's hard to weigh in on this, in my opinion, until we get some feedback from that study. I'd really love to have a plan before we weigh in on what we want to see on this very prominent corner.
Okay, thank you. Your check?
Yes, so I came in late to this and I apologize. And I saw the last two schemes. And I appreciate what Kurt is saying about the historic preservation. But you know, in terms of how we're thinking about North Main Street and the development. And in particular, our last meeting even with Form and Place, when we spoke particularly specifically about this corner and about corners in general, right, leading up through, through Main Street. How this particular building is floating on a really big site that doesn't define the street very well. And so the last two schemes that I saw seem to have done that in that it's now defining the street more fulfilling some of the housing needs that we, we, the town desperately needs. And the last designer saw on here seems to mirror well with the design across the street here. The, the other development that had news and two, two bars of housing there. And so that, in that sense, it, it seemed like it was, it was considering some context. The site is challenging and that is really large, but this, this particular historic building is sort of right in the middle of it, which makes it challenging to highlight it while like making full use of it for housing. So I, I too would like to see, to, to, I, I think that the historic preservation bit of it, I think, I, I get why it might be important. I wonder if it's possible to move that house somehow or to take elements of it for the new development. Because we, it, it is, it's unique. And yet I, I'm not sure that it's worth that much delicate maneuvering in order for it to be preserved in such a precious way. So I'm sorry I missed the first couple of schemes and I will, I will look at the video to, to catch myself up.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to make a couple of comments. First off, I, I am not at all dissuaded by the exterior or the foundation. I moved into a house which had 40 or 50 year old asbestos siding on it. When I took it off, I ended up with a beautiful clapboard house. I believe that it is possible to reconstruct and to bring it back to its old glory. So the condition of the home, I, I recognize requires money, but I don't think that it's insurmountable in terms of, I don't think it's a complete loss. I know the inside has already gone significant renovation in order to put the restaurant in there. So I would imagine the entire house would be gutted. So the, the, the size of the rooms, I think, would be that the whole thing would be gutted in order to bring it forward. I am concerned about the loss of this historic resource. I should note that we actually have a, a somewhat newly passed zoning, which provides for waivers of certain constraints on properties in order to try to save historic resources. And, and Mr. Marina, I'm wondering if you have looked at those, that's section 4.5. It's called waivers relating to natural historic resources, which can provide some relief if you were to maintain the existing structure. And so that might allow you to do things that you wouldn't think that you could do and still maintain the structure. I do find the addition of, of 10 extra units very compelling. But it is, I, in my mind, it is a balance between, you know, a significant historic resource and the needs of the town in terms of housing. And so the question is, is this the place to put that much housing? Is there a trade-off we can do here which would provide some housing and still maintain this, this particular resource? And I know that there are lots along Main Street which are larger and which could accommodate more units. And so in my mind, I don't know that the trade-off in this case is worth it. In particular, again, because of its permanent location. So while I, I do think that the designs are handsome that you presented, I really would like to see some attempt at trying to incorporate that building into the designs. And I, I, you know, I should note that there are other communities where they have taken historical buildings and they have transformed them into multiple residential units and they've done it successfully. And this was, you know, this is back before housing prices went totally wild. So I think it's still possible. So I think those are my thoughts right there. I want, I know there are a number of people in the neighborhood who are here. And I also note, I'm wondering first, John Clemson from the Historical Commission, I know you're present. Did you want to say something or?
Yes, thank you, Diab. I, I, I'll be very brief. I don't have too much to add to what you and Sally and the other planning board members have already said. I think it's very important to keep in mind this zoning relief package that could really help preservation at the site. The Historical Commission has communicated with the planning board about how significant, historically significant this building is and its presence on the street. So I think the board is aware of that and I would encourage them to pursue pursue preservation here. And as you've said, there are other, there's other room on the street for, for development. And you know, I think the boards, several of the boards will have another crack at this. And, you know, I anticipate that the ZBA might be very interested in what, what the boards have to say. So thanks for the time and I hope we can continue to pursue preservation at the site for its real importance to the town. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. So just, I'd like to ask the board. So we are now about 20 minutes or 15 minutes over. I know that there is at least one resident who would like to speak. Is the board open to allowing that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so Hank, you could identify yourself, tell us where you live.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for to allow me to speak. So I am about to on Canal Street, Seventeen Canal Street. So I I think I would be brief. I would also echo Sally and Nick said, I think, coming back just a recent trip on European country, Germany, I I could see how important historical building preservation has been. So if you look at that building, so along the North Main Street corridor, there is no such elegant building like nine, nine, ten Main Street. So I think as a neighborhood, although the current condition probably is not the ideal condition that all the neighborhood would like to see. However, I would really encourage Planning Board and also see Historical Commission to really explore the option to preserve these very important historical building on the North Main Street corridor.
Okay, thank you. And there is Emily Claire. If you could tell us where you live.
Yeah, so I live right next door. I'm in the little house in the picture you saw. I just appreciate that I have the house because I think a lot of the planning board and the town meeting helped me to have a house to buy. Sorry, I'm trying to find a place where you can see me. So I just want to say that Mr. Marino took the time to come by my house. We scheduled a visit so he could show me the plans and I wanted to say I really appreciated that. I addressed with him my concerns about safety and security and light pollution and noise pollution and those kinds of things. And I addressed my concerns about, you know, security of the neighborhood and my 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 security, my family's security of of people moving into the apartment. He talked about, you know, background checks and non smoking and things like that. So I felt reassured that, you know, he was going to be careful and and in creating a space that wasn't going to be encroaching on my sense of safety in my house and my backyard. So I definitely like the smaller of the two structures because the four story, four to five story house obviously takes, you know, is going to completely overshadow my little bitty one story dollhouse and my backyard. So as far as the historic structure goes, you know, I just moved here from Beacon Hill. I get I get the historic preservation. I just think you also need to have a plan. If you're gonna, if you're going to turn it into historic registry or do something, you have a plan for making it a good place to live. I mean, some of the buildings in Beacon Hill are sinking. On Grove Street, that's not really great. So, you know, let's not just have this be a property that degenerates over the next thirty years. If you're going to require it to be a historic registered site, then come up with a plan for making it nice and not letting it degenerate. So that's my, so of the two proposals, I like the smaller one. And I just, you know, I had, I don't have prior experience with Mr. Marino, but I appreciated him coming by and listening to my concerns and sharing his ideas.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any, is there anyone else who would like to comment on this to the board? Okay, then I think hopefully, Mr. Marina, you've got a sense of where the board is, where the board feels on this. And hopefully that will give you some idea of how to move forward on this.
I have a good idea. I appreciate the opportunity. That should do it. I think I'm going to continue to meet with some of the neighbors. And Diab, if you want to talk as well, I'm happy to talk to you as a neighbor. And but I I I don't know who it was that said if we could find a buyer that wants to preserve it. I'm the buyer. I'm not gonna, you know, walk away from the deal. I've had it underwritten for a while and are like, the conditions we have on on the building are subject to the approvals. Once we have our approvals, then we'll finally close on it. But now the question is what we get for approvals? And it's not in the model for us to to try to fix this structure that's in the middle of the site. Sally, your description of maybe having the architect take a stab at another plan, that sounds great. But what you described was an enormous you know, amount of money to to try a different approach. And I I am not in a position to keep trying to do something I don't want to do there, which is trying to fix an old building. It'll be an inferior product. It's not economically feasible to do it. And, you know, the 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 building was for sale and I took it upon myself to 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 buy it. And now it's a question of what we build. I'd like to build something unique and attractive, but I also believe, you know, I I think as I'm listening to all of you, I'm wondering if utilizing or incorporating some of the original architectural detail on a new building, if that would satisfy some of your concerns? Because I am sensitive to that. And I I believe the the current plans may not go far enough in terms of the detail you seek, but I'm open to that sort of thing. But make no mistake about it, I am the buyer. I'm not going to try to find someone else to step in for me.
Thank you. I I think the board would always welcome further discussion on in evolving this project. So please come back to us if you if you'd like more input from us. Unfortunately, I do think we have to move on.
I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. The designs looked looked nice. I appreciate coming on.
Thanks, thanks for the opportunity. Bye bye.
Bye. So up next, we have a presentation.
Did you know that there's a person who has their hand raised?
Yes, I do. And unfortunately, I I realize that, but we do.
No trouble. Just I know sometimes you can't see hands.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Yeah, I apologize to the person who wants to speak, but unfortunately, we are we are now twenty minutes behind schedule and we do have another set of people who have been waiting to speak with us in seven thirty five. So I'd like to welcome I'm going to get their names wrong because that's what I do. Rachel Whitehouse, are we here today?
That's me.
Hi, and then oh, there you are. Hi, and then we also have your George Woody Wood. Thank you. Okay, so you're you're here to present us, to present a telling us something about leaf blower, sorry, my brain.
That's right, that's fine. Is it all right if I show my screen?
I am going, let me see if I can make that happen. Okay, you should be able to share your screen.
Okay. Everybody see that? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for having us. Woody's going to start off and then he'll turn it over to me. Woody?
Yes, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Well, first, thank you very much for having us on tonight. We are especially thrilled to actually be invited to the planning board. Right now, we've spoken with the Climate Action Committee, Sustainable Winchester, Board of Health, and to our very pleasant surprise, and we now realize another very direct connection to the mission of the committee in Winchester. So first, thank you to the members of the committee who reached out to us and to to come tonight. I'm thirty five year resident of town. I have two grown sons, spent four years on the Energy Committee, the original Energy Committee in Winchester. And later was co-founder of the first Climate Action Committee in town. And I'm also a former town meeting member and in general, a community activist. So thank you for having us tonight. We're here to talk to you about a proposed bylaw that we want to bring to the Fall Town Meeting. And it has to do with restricting the use of gas leaf blowers. And later on in the presentation, we're going to tell you how we propose to do that. And we're also going to tell you what it's not going to do, that some other communities who have similar restrictions in place that have been found to be untenable. Our goal, simply put, is to have the next slide.
Is the screen supposed to be changing? Now, Woody, I I think he's going to hand it over to me.
Yes, go right, go right ahead, Rachel.
Okay, so I'm sorry about that. So I'm Rachel Whitehouse. I'm a Nine Hillside Avenue, fifteen year resident of Winchester. And like many people in Winchester, I work full time and I work in the city. And two years ago, when I was working, suddenly we all had to work from home. And you're in your office and you're suddenly saying, what is that noise that's coming up over the hills of Winchester all day long? And it takes just a few minutes of research to realize that those are gas powered leaf blowers that are incredibly noisy and that the noise travels very far. And it does, you just a little bit more research online and you realize that there some real health issues associated with those tools. So here it is two years later and I find myself presenting to you and talking about Quiet Clean Winchester, which is named actually after a national movement to ease the tran- ease the transition to electric lawn care. Because there actually is an option to gas powered lawn care and it's electric lawn care. So as Woody said, you know, we're we're really just a group of people, residents, members of churches, civic groups, business leaders working for a quiet or clean Winchester. Our goals are really cleaner, healthier air, the reduction of damaging noise levels and reduced environmental pollution of all types. And we have a three part approach. We have education, landscaper advocacy, that's advocating for and with landscapers, and the leaf blower bylaw that we spoke about. So I'm just going to speak for a few minutes about the Winchester Master Plan. We have looked through it and we're not students of it like all of you are, but we have looked through it and identified several of your of the goals in the plan that we think that Quiet Clean Winchester is supporting. And I'm going to go through these very quickly because we're going to touch on them. And we're going to try to be done in ten minutes, which is why I'm speaking so quickly. Some of the goals that we think we would be supporting are building community, increasing participation of community members in town decisions, balancing development with preservation. We very much want to cultivate the success of the existing landscaping business, bring on more what we feel would be great would be low environmental impact businesses and and lawn care providers and seize funding opportunities to support Winchester. And we've already started on that and I'll tell you about that. Ensuring sustainability, certainly prioritizing health, especially for the community's most vulnerable populations. You'll see how we are proposing that, reducing greenhouse gases, becoming climate prepared, preserving street trees. And was delighted to see the connecting people to places because our kids come home. I think you are all very proud of Winchester being a walkable city. And we in the bylaws address that specifically. So the Quiet Clean Winchester Education Platform is, like I said, very aligned with the Master Plan, increasing community engagement. We have a website, QuietCleanWinchester.org, that we launched just a few weeks ago. We have, we're trying to focus on experiential use of electric leaf blowers. They're not magic, they're just a different type of tool. And so we have a lending library of two EGO brand commercial grade electric leaf blowers. And believe it or not, the first one is seven hundred and sixty five cubic feet per minute is actually the most powerful leaf blower on the market for either electric or gas. So what you'll hear a lot is that electric electric leaf blowers are not powerful enough. And that's actually not the case. The next one, it just talks about how much quieter electric leaf blowers are than the gas ones. And and it had, these have batteries. Now, this is, you know, they have batteries that average runtime of ninety minutes and then you can recharge them in ninety minutes. So yes, if you are a commercial leaf blower and you had a fleet of these, you would need more than one battery for the day. You need quite a few. So again, the whole point there is just to have leaf blowers that people, commercial landscapers and residents can borrow and try out. We have these public presentations we've talked about and coming up is Town Day and the farmer's market for more public engagement in this. The second part of our platform is landscaper advocacy, which relates to the planning board's continued success of existing businesses. We are very much centering the landscapers in our effort. We've seen some other towns where this that have tried to work on this transition and it's been controversial and sort of fighting with the landscapers and we don't want to be in that place. We are, these are longtime Winchester residents, longtime Winchester businesses. They employ a lot of people in town. We're not trying to hurt their businesses in any way. Small business is very important to Winchester and to Quiet Clean Winchester. And so we're talking to them, we're having meetings, we're trying to understand their business needs. With so this last point I want to make before I turn it over to Woody is just advocating and seizing opportunities for funding. So Rep. Michelle Caccillo from Lexington has proposed this buyback program for where you switch out your gas leaf blowers for electric leaf blowers. And Representative Catherine Clark actually has has succeeded in getting that into a second round federal appropriation request and sent out a request for support from the town. And we got fifteen members to write letters. And the the program that is considering being funded is specifically for Winchester, Arlington and Lexington, which is fantastic. So fingers crossed that comes through. And the point there would be to offset any upfront costs that landscapers might have as they transition. I'm going to turn it over to Woody, who's going to talk about the third part of our platform, which is the leaf blower bylaw, what's in it and how that aligns with the Planning Board's prioritization of health and sustainability.
Great, thank you, Rachel. And yes, we're sensitive to your time. We'll try to keep this brief. So what is the bylaw? What are we proposing to do? This slide will offer what we are calling the key elements. And the next slide, we're going to tell you what this isn't going to do. We feel that's almost equally important. So we're going to allow, we propose to allow the bylaw would allow electric leaf blowers year round, Monday through Saturdays by all users. So we're trying to encourage that transition to electric. The gas leaf blowers, we call GLB, will be allowed Monday through Friday during what we call the shoulder seasons. And you'll see the dates there, April one through the end of Bay and October one through the first of December. And will be allowed, there are homeowners who own gas leaf blowers, those will be allowed, we're proposing on Saturday. We'll also ask the commercial leaf blowers who want to operate in town to seek permits at a branch of Town Hall that they designate or the Town Hall designates for a low cost registration fee. And the purpose here is to annually have them come in, sign up and to hand them the most recent copy of the bylaws. And also it'll be posted on the website, so people seeking landscapers will have this access to that list. Enforcement we're proposing would be done by the Police Department and it will be first a warning followed by several fines. And it would apply to everyone in town, the residents, municipal employees and the commercial landscapers. And as we are And as we are proposing this for Fall Town Meeting, uh, it would not be effective until June of next year. Next slide. But what is it? So Rachel and I and others have spent a fair amount of time with at least eight or ten other communities in the metro Boston area. And who are ahead of us. And we'd like to think we've learned from their mistakes and the feedback they've gotten from citizens and revisions to their bylaws. So what isn't this? Well, we're not proposing to ban it, uh, or phase it out entirely. And that's, uh, what's currently active in Lexington and Arlington. We're not proposing to control the age of the leaf blower. I.e. no, uh, leaf blower allowed before a certain year. Those are in effect in Newton and Lexington. We are not prohibiting the dust that would blow up from one yard into a neighboring yard. This is actually in the bylaw of Somerville. Um, we are also not specifying a decibel level measurable at fifty feet. Because other communities have told us that enforcement by the police is extremely difficult in this case and hard to document. And we did not want to impose that kind of burden on the police department in our town. And we have one town that exempted the bylaw from, from the municipal property. And we felt that the bylaw should apply to all property in town, private, commercial and municipal. And by municipal, we mean either by employees or contractors working for the town. Um, so, um, the bylaw is available and you can review that. If you look at the next one, this is basically, the trend is happening, um. It, uh, the communities here, if you look closely, the ones in the darker colors are where their restrictions have been enacted. Um, and in the couple cases you see have been phased out, I mentioned those earlier. And some of the lighter colors are where there are proposals. But what we want to, um, impress on you is the mass of color overall. You see the activity around the restriction of some kind of gas leaf blowers to be, uh, sweeping through the metro Boston area. And as in the case in other efforts in Winchester, we tend not to be right on that cutting edge. But come behind it and learn from the other communities. Thank you. Um, we're very concerned and we know you are about, um, the safety of adults, children and workers in towns. And, um, through very easy research that you all can find online. Um, and you can hear from working at home, which I'm sure you all are. Uh, these gas fire, uh, gas leaf blowers are extremely noisy and in fact found to be by state and federal agencies to actually be extremely detrimental to your hearing. Uh, if you're not wearing proper protection. And here we cite the numbers. Um, you will see that the gas leaf blowers are often certainly, um, um, in groups of two or three. But often just one exceeds the allowable, uh, decibel level, uh, for operation. Next, continuing the prioritization of health, as we know the planning board is concerned about. If you look in the cloud there, you will see the particulates and chemical emissions, just a shortlist, the carbon monoxide, the benzene. The fine particulate matter, uh, the smog and ozone. And in fact, to the right, we extracted that warning label off the backside of an actual leaf blower. And right on the label, it's, it warns about against unburned hydrocarbons. Um, that are known to cause respiratory problems, cancer, birth defects or other reproductive harm. Right on the label. So these two-stroke engines, many of which you have heard of, burn oil and gas. And by some, uh, state and federal restrictions, these are actually deemed to be poisonous and toxic. Yet they are operating, the operators have them on their back. And they're operated near adults and children in our community. Next, please. So obviously, um, sustainability is a priority for the, the, the planning board and in the, in the master plan and and we believe this will, uh, support that mission. Um, you will, it is considered two-stroke engines in general. One of the largest producers of carbon monoxide, non-methane, hydrocarbons and, uh, nitrogen oxides. Uh, and by the way, for those of you who want to do a deep dive on any of the science on this or any of the data we've quoted, uh, simply email us, um, and we have the references and citations. We're happy to share those with you at a later date. Obviously, because these are gas and oil burning engines, uh, carbon emissions will be reduced dramatically. Um, the USDAO estimated fifteen million tons of CO2 are emitted for lawn maintenance alone. Um, and eleven pounds come from, uh, a gas leaf blower, uh, in just one hour. That's eleven pounds of CO2. And lastly, and, um, something that you don't always think about is the waste products from operating an engine of any kind. The, uh, air and, and fuel filters, spark plugs, et cetera, the plastic that goes to landfills. And as you know, in Winchester and neighboring communities, all of our solid waste is incinerated often, uh, in, uh, North End over Orheville. Next, please. So, uh, there's many stats in the community, uh, in, in our quiet, clean community. The one we found to be most impressive is one hour from a gas leaf blower is the equivalent of driving your car from Boston to Jacksonville, Florida. That's eleven hundred miles. Again, we have the data to support this, um, and there's other, uh, comparisons which we find to be even more dramatic. These are loud, um, toxic machines. And we hope, um, to help the users, um, transition them to, um, a cleaner uses. Next, please.
Yeah.
So just to recap quickly, we, we think, um, w- we are showing, um, a similar kind of philosophy to the master plan in that we're trying to balance the, the need for commercial li- landscapers to operate in our community and have sustainable businesses. And hence we've introduced restrictions and not bans. And we're encouraging the use of electric leaf blowers. Uh, we've shown you why, uh, we're, uh, ensuring or encouraging sustainability. Um, and hopefully, uh, by, uh, restricting the use of this equipment. We're making, uh, and I quote from your master plan, the community safer and healthier walking and biking. So with that, we, we thank you very much for your time. We're both here to take any questions you may have. Um, and look forward to those.
Oh, thank you very much. And, uh, you can't, uh, get on the planning board's side any better than continuously quoting from our master plan. So kudos to your marketing department.
And we, we thanked your colleagues on the committee. Some of them, uh, helped us in finding those citations. You know who you are.
Um, so I, uh, I this is, uh, I'm trying to, just trying to manage time. So it's now twenty after, um, why don't we, um, I think we should do a reshuffle of our agenda because we do have another party meeting for Lockwin. So we can move that up instead of our master plan and implementation committee discussion. So why don't we, if the board has, uh, why don't we set aside a, a couple of minutes for the board to, uh, if you have any comments or questions? Um, I have a few, but I think I'll just email it to you and, uh, take them offline. With any, one of the board, go ahead.
I, uh, that was very interesting, um, and it's very compelling. So hopefully I'll be using a, uh, an electric model, uh, sometime soon.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, we did the, we did the lawnmower and, uh, I think that's what's going to be the, the leaf blower as well.
Yeah.
I want to thank Yicheng for inviting George or Woody, excuse me, and Rachel to the planning board meeting. I thought that was well done, Yicheng. And, and I am in support of the principles that clean, quiet, quiet, clean?
Clean, quiet, right.
Quite clean Winchester is pursuing. And as D F said, I'm, I'm, um, grateful that you took the time to align your, uh, case statement with the master plan because a good deal of thought has gone into both of those.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. And we didn't even, Sally gets to talk about the trees and how, uh, how the, um, leaf blowers blow the top soil off the trees and damages the roots eventually and, um, so actually one of the, uh, if any of you are on the, um, on the mailing, there's, um, what, what is it called? It's, um, Woody, what's the name of the company that's, that's come out with a new service specifically to help put the nutrients back into the trees? There's a landscaping service.
Boston Tree Preservation.
Yes, Boston Preserv- has a new service that you can purchase to put the nutrients back into your trees after you blow all their leaves off. So.
So, thank you for presenting.
Yeah, thanks.
Very much, uh, Yicheng or Kurt.
I, I want to thank Rachel and Woody. Thank you so much for coming. Um, and I told them to, to be frank to everyone that, um, speaking in master plan is, is our love language. So. But I, I want to emphasize especially, um, I really appreciate how you guys prioritize more vulnerable, um, populations, um, especially uh, the service workers who, who work and, and are exposed to this toxin and as well as the, the children who are walking around. And, uh, these, these people aren't the ones who are going to be voting at town meeting. Um, so, you know, it, it's really wonderful to prioritize that and not to, not to mention the birds and the bugs who definitely don't vote at town meeting. And so I, I very much appreciate it.
Yeah. You know, Yicheng, there was one, um, slide which I took out. We have a longer deck and I took it out for the amount of time, but the, um, uh, we're proposing that the leaf blowers, the commercial leaf blowers have to stop on Monday through Friday at three P M. And not go till five, so that our, so the children, uh, to six actually. So the children are who are walking in our eminently walkable town. Playing outside or not exposed to the, um, to the, uh, toxic fumes in the afternoon. See if that gets through, but that's, that's our proposal.
Yeah, the only thing I was going to add, um, was, you know, I, I also appreciated your sensitivity to, I think, just thinking about small businesses and the implications that you know, replacing significant amounts of equipment, um, that burden that that can have on those, those people. Um, and so I think the buyback program is critical to the success personally, um. And, uh, and I liked the fact that your proposal had sort of this hybrid approach where there are certain periods of the year where you still permit the use of this equipment during certain amounts of time. Cause I think that's I think that's just a practical, um, and more thoughtful approach to all the constituents I think involved. I am curious to know what happens to all these gas powered leaf blowers at the buyback program. Like is there a, a huge landfill somewhere? Are they all going or do they get converted somehow or?
We, we don't really know the answer to that, but think about the fact that one of the largest landscapers in town told me that a gas leaf blower that he buys lasts only for one year. Spring cleanup, fall cleanup and he throws it away anyway. So all those leaf blowers are already getting thrown away on a, on a, they, they do replace, a larger landscaper will replace it, it's, um,
All bases.
Leaf blowers and that regularly anyway.
Got it. Interesting.
We're, we're optimistic, um, says the owner of an all-electric gas, uh, all-electric car. And someone who works in renewable energy, I'm very optimistic the battery technology will advance over the next two or three years. Such that the commercial landscapers will get a longer, um, uh, longer life out of one battery charge. But the reality now, as Rachel alluded to, is that, you know, at full board, maybe one hour out of a battery pack. And we just don't think that's fair to the commercial landscapers to transition from gas that quickly. And that's why we didn't ban it. We didn't propose to ban it. Uh, but, but encouraged them to transition over time to the use, uh, of electricity and, and battery. That's the philosophy behind it.
Thank you. I, I, I thought there was a, a very pragmatic approach. I thought it was pretty, it was very sensitive, um. And, uh, I, my hope is that technology will overcome this product, this problem. And that eventually people will stop manufacturing glass leaf blowers, but, uh, we'll see. Um, so thank you very much. That was a great presentation.
Yeah.
I, I think the board, I can, I can say without taking a vote, I think the board is behind you a hundred percent. So, um.
Is there, um, is the board, uh, ever consider, um, voting or submitting a letter of support or how does one, um, approach that idea?
I think, um, when you are ready to submit this to the town as an article for the Fall Town Warrant. At that point, I think, um, submitting it back before the board in its final language. And we would certainly take a vote on it prior to town meeting. If you wanted the board to co-sponsor it, then you'd want to come to us earlier to see whether we would be willing to co-sponsor it. I don't know if that's part of your plan.
Sure, just do it.
I, 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 I cannot promise that the board will co-sponsor it, but I'm just saying, if that's, if that one of your strategies is to get boards to co-sponsor, then uh, come to us earlier with, 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 you know.
Okay.
With final language.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. You're a critical board in town. We love, love your support. And please talk this up with your friends and, uh, your local landscapers. If, if they haven't spoken with us, feel free to give them our email address and phone numbers. We're eager to speak with as many as we can. And hear, uh, what their needs are as well. So spread the word, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So, uh, let us, um, what I would suggest now is that um, our, our, our guests for Lockwin and Lauren Kurt have been waiting in half an hour. So why don't I, why don't we, um, switch around our agenda so that we, we take them up directly? And after, um, our discussion there, we move on to the master plan implementation committee. So, um, what we have before us is, so who do we have? So we have, uh, Sam DeLuca and Phyllis Etzel. Uh, both of you folks are for, you represent the, uh, the developers.
That's correct. Yep, Lockwin LLC, uh, and we're, um, here tonight, uh, to request uh, the approval of the roadway construction cost estimate as established by the town engineer in the amount of seventy-five thousand, as well as the form of the tripartite agreement, which I believe has been approved by town council.
Yes, it has. Um, and I have, so this is for the, um, a brief background is the, um, this project was, um, there was the town meeting rezoned a formerly light industrial land in a neighborhood which used to have the paddock in, um, I think I'm getting their name correct, uh, drug cleaning factory there. And it, it was re, uh, rezoned as residential and it was subdivided by previous incarnation of this board. And this is essentially closing out that subdivision as it were. Um, and according to legal and the town planner, everything seems to be in order. Uh, did you folks want to make a, a short presentation on this?
I don't have anything else besides that. Phyllis, did you want to?
No, I don't. Um, I, I, uh, would like to, uh, thank, uh, Brian Zuckley. I know he's not there. Uh, uh, with his, uh, assistance, working with us and creating the tripartite agreement. And, um, finalizing the bond. Thank you.
Okay, great. So, um, what I'm going to do is I will try to find out where I stashed the language. So much easier when Brian does this. How is that possible? Okay. So, uh, does the board have any questions on this? I don't know how much I could answer other than what you've already heard, but certainly if you have any questions.
Um, I'd be curious if Brian Mantor had any comments.
Oh, Brian. I'm sorry, I missed you there, Brian. Brian?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Yicheng. Um, yeah, so the calculation to get to the seventy-five thousand dollars is based off of, um, what, um, the Lockwan Group had submitted. They initially submitted a cost estimate that had items that looked, were in line with, with like a, a closing out of projects. The prices looked reasonable. Their, their quantities looked reasonable. The next steps after that was to add, um, an estimate to, you know, to, as we all know, inflation has gone up dramatically. Um, the, the developer had submitted this in December of twenty twenty-one. So we just kind of used, um, U- U- United States Bureau Labor Statistics to try to up, up anticipate what the inflation has been since they submitted it. So it's been about five months, which was about three percent. Um, and then we were required to add a ten percent margin of error. On top of that, then we were to forecast forward five years to what costs would be looking like in five years. So that that's how we got to the um seventy-five thousand. So initially, they they proposed about fifty-three thousand. And based on these inflation factors and project cost projections, we got it up to about seventy-five.
Okay, thank you.
So, Diab, I have a question about process for subdivision control. Um, so this this is the first time um that this has come before me, anyway, in my service on the planning board. Um, all of this was done for Abbey Road. Similarly, that there was a a tripartite agreement and money was put in escrow um to um serve as surety, essentially, that the um creation and the installation of a proper roadway in the subdivision would actually occur and that they would get some amount of that back, or perhaps all of that, I'm not sure. Um, I another close reading will be in order. Um, but so that's the that's the gist of what we're deciding here, right? Is this seventy-five thousand dollar um amount for how much it will cost to create the road?
I think it's there there um, so I do not believe there's an actual road in the subdivision. I think it's just it was subdivided into three lots. I think they all have frontage, so that I don't believe there is a road. This is for uh Brian, could you fill us in on on what the what the amount is actually for?
Yeah, so they have, it it looks like it's really geared towards the, you know, the right away, like improving the roadway in the area. Um, so they have, you know.
Right there, Diab.
Oh, sorry.
Wait.
This tiny thing?
That, yes, the one you're gonna make big.
Uh, no, this is just a schedule.
Oh, that's no, that's not the one. Sorry, sorry, sorry. It's another page.
Yeah, there's a there's a cost estimate.
There we go.
Thank you. So um S- Sam, this is the estimate to um, I guess I haven't seen a site plan, so I don't understand what, I don't have a sense of the scope of the work, but um.
I might be able to uh assist on Loring Court is actually a cul-de-sac. And uh the three lots we've created front on Loring, the existing Loring Court. And we've already installed uh all of the water and sewer mains uh necessary for the three houses. What we need to do is we're going to be grinding the um end portion of that cul-de-sac and then repaving on that. We're not actually building a new road.
Okay, it's awful. And I do believe the site plan for this came in front of the board last year. Diab, is that correct? Because I don't have a fresh memory of it.
I will, I will take whoever said yes at their word.
That's correct.
Thank you, Phyllis.
Yeah, I recall the site plan. Um, I don't recall when it came before board.
And it was, it was approved, uh, let me see, October thirteen, two thousand twenty.
Great.
Okay. Prehistoric times.
Yes.
So uh, any further questions?
Has legal looked at the tripartite agreement?
Yes, yes, legal, legal um was was part of the whole process. So I think we have, I I I Brian's not here to to jog my memory. I think there are two two votes we need to take. One one tonight is to release the funds, and the other is to authorize me to sign the agreement on behalf of the planning board. Um, and to make sure that any small um any changes are appropriate. And that's pretty much a pro forma. I don't, I don't see anything really changing on it. So um the the motion language for creating the escrow is uh to establish the escrow amount at seventy-five thousand dollars and release the lots from subdivision along the application of building permits for the Lockwin Loring Court Street definitive subdivision through the tripartite agreement that is in our package. And if someone would make that motion?
So move.
Uh, thank you, and a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. So uh let's do a roll call vote on this. Uh, Nick?
You're muted, Nick.
Let me see if I can ask him to unmute.
Okay, sorry about that. I I just uh based on legal and engineering, having reviewed this and it is this I I understand that it meets all the requirements uh of the uh subdivision regs. I will vote aye.
Uh, thank you, Kurt.
Sorry, I didn't realize all my things are off. Aye.
Eeching?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
And Diab says aye as well. And then uh the other motion would be to give the chair permission to uh finalize the tripartite agreement and sign it.
So moved.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call vote, please. Uh, Nick?
Aye.
Uh, Eeching?
Hi.
Sally?
Aye.
Bert?
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I I.
Thank you so much.
Uh, hopefully.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, uh, hope that solves all the problems, and uh if not, I guess we'll be back.
Thank you very much.
Have a great evening.
Thank you.
You too.
Um, okay, so we are now um now let me find our agenda again. So we have before us uh Master Plan Implementation Committee. Um, and then we have Position Description Discussion and Public Outreach. So um we have approximately fifty minutes left. So why don't, I think the Master Plan Implementation Committee was simply just an update as to what's going on. And um I can tell you that I do not have, I believe that the advertisement, the the opening, the it was open for several weeks that was posted on the town's website, and I believe it was circulated elsewhere. I don't have the actual number of applicants. I was hoping Brian would be back by now to let us know. Um, in terms of the committees who um are selection committees. So we have, I've gotten responses from most everyone. There are just a couple of committees that haven't yet responded. I've reached out to them. Um, and hopefully we'll hear from them very soon. I know that one committee will be making a decision tomorrow night, hopefully. And so we should have our selection committees all done. Uh, one thing that was left over from last week or the last time we spoke about this is that, and I actually have this as a document, let me bring it up. Is that uh Kurt, you were uh you were not with us when we made the, when we asked for volunteers for other committees. And uh.
That's a fatal mistake. What, so what's?
Well, uh luckily for you, we did not uh assign you an action in your absence, so uh you actually have a choice this week. So let me um, let me bring up.
And Diab, this is in regards to staffing the um selection committee for each of the four themes, is that right? Not staffing, but participating, I should say, in.
Yeah. So um here is a list of people, the the current the groups and the uh current members. Uh, I don't, Select Board has appointed three members. I don't have their names just yet. Uh, but for the two, the I'm slotted for Insurance Sustainability, uh Building Community, and also uh Youth Representative. So I think that the youth representative has to fall to the chair. But Kurt, if you would like to be uh one of the, on the selection committee for either Insurance Sustainability or Building Community, it's all yours if you'd like it.
Um, is there any additional information on what these groups? Like, like what this role entails or what the goals are of these groups?
Yes, so this is um, so there's a the the Master Plan Implementation Committee is a ten-body group which will um advise and cooperate with other town boards to uh make sure that the goals of the master plan are obtained. And the, there are ten members. Eight members are divided into the four core themes of the master plan. And so, for instance, Insurance Sustainability talks about uh environmental sustainability, as well as sustainability in government. Uh, Building Community is about um uh relationships between people within town and things of that nature. So the master plan has uh a chapter essentially on each of these groups. And so uh as a member of the selection committee, you would be uh interviewing and selecting uh the two members who would fall within whichever group. So for instance, um, we hope to have two people who would be uh essentially representing the insurance sustainability role on the mass, on the implementation committee, as well as building community, et cetera.
Okay. Uh, Diab, you you tell me, is there, do you have a a stronger connection to one or the other?
Um.
I can tell you, I'm I'm somewhat indifferent, so I I would really, if you have a a strong preference, I'm happy to to take the other.
You know, that's a, that's a, it's a, it's a tough one, because uh I'd, why don't I go with the people that I haven't spoken, I could work with other people I haven't worked with before. How's that? Um, why, I tell you what, how about if you do Insurance Sustainability?
Okay.
I know all these people. I don't need to talk to them anymore. Okay.
Diab, clarifying question, if I may? Um, so the role of the planning board person on each of these selection committees is to participate in the selection of two people who have applied to serve on the Master Plan Implementation Committee with a focus on that particular theme of strategies for the future. Is that right?
That is well put.
And so um Kurt would be meeting with Ken and the rep from the Conservation Commission, the Climate Action Committee, and the Capital Planning Committee. Those five people would meet maybe three times total before or two times?
It was just two, maybe one, it all, I mean.
Two, maybe one. And then, and then is this a a responsibility that um reoccurs a year later because of the staggering of the terms?
Yes.
So that we get everybody on a three-year cycle?
Yeah, and next year we would be reaching out to um ask for volunteers for the selection committees again. So this would be a standing.
This is a one-time selection committee? Um, just just to get the MPIC started, they're not going to reconvene when one of those eight positions, because the way we wrote it, we said of the eight, we wanted to get everybody so that they were all on a different three-year term.
Yes, the selection committees would meet once a year.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to understand. Thank you.
They would meet annually for presumably only an hour or so, to be honest, because
Good.
I I I met, I don't know how many people will apply, but typically these um the actual selection process goes very quickly.
And now that we have Brian here, um, uh, through you, could we get an update on how many candidates?
Yes, Brian. Is Brian here?
Yes, here I am. Um, so candidate numbers. Um. Uh, looks like there are a decent number of s- uh student applications, but a total of fourteen applicants.
Over the four groups plus student?
Total applicant.
Yeah.
And Brian, where is that, like, description of the volunteer position? I'm looking on the Winchester.
It's it's closed, I closed on Friday. So it was open, it it actually was open only, it was open for a short time and then mistakenly got taken down and then was up for ten days more than what we had anticipated, so it ended up going until Friday.
Brian, you should be able to pull up on your screen the the last document that the working group within the planning board had um settled on.
Yep. Um, that's the student rep letter. Hold on. Sorry, I do not have it handy. It's gonna take me a second.
Basically, um, Eeching, you were asking for the the posting, what, to see the posting that went up on the town website, right?
Yes.
Uh, okay. Got it. Now I'll put it up now. I think this was the most recent one.
Oh, oh no, so this is the job description for, right, this is the job description for the actual members of the MPIC, the eight. Um.
The core team.
The core team.
Yeah, the the, yeah, the the Master Plan Implementation Committee, I thought that was the, um, Eeching, were you looking for the?
Oh, that's, that's what I was looking for.
Yeah, because the selection committee there, it's just, it's just simply, we're asking for people that are, you know, for that are, yeah, to participate. There is no, yeah, so this is, this is what is, we can we can go through it, or I don't, or, yep.
And so um the planning board members who will be participating in each of the four selection committees um will have in mind um this charge here, as well as um those strategies in the master plan, action plan, that relate to that one of the four themes. Is that right? Yes, okay.
Yes, yes. I imagine there are, there may be people with some overlap, so.
Well, and there should be, because this is not intended to be a siloed um r- rollout of strategies. It's intended to be a highly cross um departmental, what would you call it? Cross committee?
Disciplinary.
Interdisciplinary or?
Interdisciplinary.
Brian, would you be able to sum that out, just so that we know?
Um, yeah, it would have been good to have it in the packet, I realize.
Sure. Um, I thought it was, oh, uh, no, sorry, it was not in, it was, it was not. Um, also, very quick procedural question. Where are we in terms of our agenda? Because this does not look like it was the time for Master Plan Implementation Committee, so I'm just curious to see how much we got through since.
Uh, we are actually uh if we're done with Master Plan Implementation Committee, we next up have Town Planner, Position Description, and Education and Outreach.
So we did get through nine, ten, and we did get through subdivision?
Yep.
Okay, just wanted, I just wanted to make sure. Um, I also might put my camera off for a few minutes while I eat dinner, just fair wor- fair warning, that's why I'm going off camera. It's been a long day.
Um, are there, uh, so I believe the the next step on the implementation committee is I I I belatedly bugged a few people to um get a response. I will follow up so that we can we had intended that the um selection committee meet. Oh, I forget what our deadline was.
No, I was trying to find my notes about that.
Yeah, so I think it was, uh, obviously, it's flexible, uh, but certainly within the next couple of weeks, hopefully. And then we were hoping to get the uh actually the first meeting of the Master Plan Implementation Committee uh in mid-June.
Before high school graduation, hopefully.
Yeah.
Are are the planning board members supposed to um like initiate those meetings?
It is not required. Um, uh, the the idea would be that um Brian will be, he is a member of the committee, so he's, he certainly has the um the the institutional knowledge required to keep it going, and I thought that I would also be part of them just to get them up and running. the the institutional knowledge required to keep it going. And I thought that I would also be part of them just to get them up and running. But I think your your participation there is entirely voluntary. If you, you know, just want to watch it, you know, in the peanut gallery at home. Actually, I don't think it will be broadcast. But we will have, we have allocated funds for a recording secretary, so that will make it easier on them.
Well, the the meetings themselves, the meetings of the master plan implementation committee would be subject to open meeting law with posting deadlines.
I do not think they would be. I think that because it's a subcommittee, technically, it may, I think we should treat them as such, but I don't know that technically, because it's a subcommittee and none of our members are on there. It's it's in one of those funky.
It's a meeting that was, we pulled the warrant article, that's right. Okay, good. Yes, I see.
Yeah, so I think we should treat it as such, which is why we are having, uh, uh, somebody will be taking minutes for them, so.
And there's a posting deadline then, but so this is all good. Does that answer your question, Eicheng?
And I I think we should try to get them, um, I think it'll also be up to the the people on the committee, whether they wish to be recorded, it's up to them. They, you know, one of the things is they're volunteers at a very different level than elected volunteers who are appointed for on on none of the major boards. So it's up to us to make sure that they feel comfortable in meeting. And perhaps the meeting minutes are sufficient for the transparency that we would like. So that's something we could discuss with them. But I imagine that, uh, yeah, anyone who wants to show up can, but it's not required.
So you're still waiting to hear from committees who would serve on the selection, who would send a representative for each of the select, for some of the slots on some of the selection committees?
Yes, and 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 the fact that they haven't been reminded earlier is all my fault, so. It's, uh, so no, no.
Have we noticed?
Okay, so, um, if we are, um, if there are no other comments on that, then we can move on to position description. And so we can either, uh, do that, or we can let Brian finish, uh, his meal and do, uh, publication and outreach.
I would favor that.
Okay. So why don't we, so this is essentially, no, Brian's back.
No, he's not. He's chewing.
Last bite, I'm ready. Here we go.
You're ready. Okay, so let's do position description. Let's do this in order. We gotta get this out of the way because we keep punting it. So Brian, do you want to pop up your, uh, your red mark draft or positions? And I'd actually marked yours up.
Yeah, so it was, was it not, it was in last week's packet, correct?
It was in the five, ten packet.
In the five, ten packet?
Because last week was form in place.
Correct. All right. Oh, gosh, the packet from May tenth is a hundred and fifty pages. Hold on. Got it. Okay.
Where does it begin? What page does it begin?
Um, it's on the five, ten packet, page thirty seven. And here we are.
So, I am wondering about the most efficient way to go through this. And, um, so the the, so Brian, you have taken the existing position description and you have introduced your, you have made some additions in red.
Correct.
And are any of those red ones, the existing red ones from that version from many years ago, or they all?
Yeah, let me see here. It might be a mix of both. Let me see. I'll tell you in just a second. So, yeah, you know what? It's actually kind of a mix. So the red, so the red is, um, we can, we can go through, but the the red is is both the new one as well as, sorry, the 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 version that I have marked up as well as the version that, uh, was the original, um, the original one from six years ago.
Okay, so maybe it's, maybe it's best if, I mean, how how many people are prepared to, um, to dive into this right now?
I I'm not prepared to do that right now, but I do have sort of some framing questions, Diab.
Okay.
So what I do know, having looked through your job description, Brian, um, and this is extremely helpful, actually. Um, although I didn't know to look in the May tenth packet, so that's probably why I'm less ready than I would like to be. But, um, what it tells me is that as the town planner, you get engaged with many other, uh, boards and their activities and deliverables, if it overlaps with any planning, land use, affordable housing type and and economic development type activity. And I, not only do I see it in the job description, but I see that in just what I understand about how the flow of your week is, that this is all the stuff that you do. You do a lot more than just be a planning, a town planner. Or the way that the town planner role is structured in our town is very broadly diffused or dispersed. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think it, um, you know, I'm, I believe if I'm the third planner that Winchester's ever had, there, the previous planners it was definitely, so this job description, uh, there's a, there's actually a memorandum of understanding, an MOU between me and the planning board. And so was the previous planners, and I think that there were, it would be, excuse me, the planning board was there was a a stressful relationship between who the planner was. Was the planner just, just there to serve, you know, just there to serve the planning board, or is the planner really, you know, a town position as well? And I think now it's kind of morphed into what's, you know, generally seen as more appropriate where there's, there's obviously a lot of overlap and it's, you know, it's it's causing the need, obviously, for more potential people needed. But, but yeah, I think, uh, I think you're right, and I think that the position has changed over the past, you know, decade or so.
Well, you've been, you've been in the job for eight years, nine years, seven years?
August will, or July will be eight, yeah.
Eight years. So, so what we see here as a job description is sort of an organic evolution of a document, um, over an eight year period. Is that correct?
I think so. And and to be honest, it's not going to probably have every single thing that I do, but it it, this is pretty comforting. Pretty comprehensive at this point now.
So the 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 discussion, um, in front of us tonight, Diab, is to discuss and then decide something?
I think that the, to to, so this document has has been fairly unchanged since I think it was first written many years ago. It did go through one edit to add some things a couple, about four or five years ago, maybe. And I think that it's just a wise thing to review it to ensure that it it, um, reflects the what Brian is doing and what this current board thinks Brian should be doing. So we 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 should learn from, we shouldn't be bound by what previous boards thought was going to happen in the future, because they can't, we can't predict it. But just to make sure that this is current.
So one of the things that I was doing when I was looking at this was, um, thinking about the relationship between the town planner and the volunteer elected planning board, and how that relationship works around the country or around Massachusetts. Because I'm new to the planning board. This is my first term. Um, in fact, everybody except Diab is new. And so I just, I don't have a frame of reference. What I see is somebody who's spread really thin and that we've not succeeded over the years in growing the planning department. And so I wanted to know if we could, I don't know, make this a realistic. Um, and is it serving the planning board's needs in terms of what Brian would be working on if he wasn't doing other things? Not related to the planning board.
That's an interesting point. Uh, are we worried about cannibalization of Brian in 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 terms of him being pulled away in fifty different directions? When we would love to have more of him.
But but it is, my question is, is this the exercise is to redefine the job description or just to say, yeah, this looks like it's an accurate discussion of what's going on these days?
Yeah, so I think there's also a discussion we should have is what goes into the planning, the description, and what actually goes into the, um, our yearly review and suggestions for goals in the near future.
Right, that's good. I felt a certain lack of being in a very good, uh, uh, human resources specialist in this regard. I just, I don't, I don't have a lot of expertise in reviewing job descriptions, thinking about them relative to the reality of the nine to five or seven to eleven, Monday through Saturday work.
Yeah, so in my experience, the job descriptions have all been much broader and vaguer than the actual tasks which sell. What the heck do I have?
So just, could we get some help from the personnel committee to say, what do you think of this job description? And Diab makes a good point that a lot of this stuff should be listed in goals or in yearly deliverables or whatever, but can we like condense it, make, take it up one level and then have a reference document that gets updated? Like the goals document?
So, yeah, I I I think we're having two, two different things. So that this is not supposed to be, I guess, like a goals document or it it's really talking about duties, things that I that I should be doing or have to do as part of my job.
Okay, okay.
It's not, I think.
That really is a job description then.
Yeah, well, I mean, sometimes it could be as detailed as like percentage wise, which is not out of the ordinary, to be honest, where, you know, thirty percent of your time, you're doing this, forty percent of your time, you're doing that, like, so that that does enter job descriptions. But in terms of your question related to kind of what other cities and towns do, I think i- in terms of the relationship with the planning board, first of all, there's a very large distinction between cities and towns in terms of how the, in in terms of how they're they're related, because really in the city, the pl- the the chief planner is actually really working under the mayor. They're not really working for the board, although they staff the board. But essentially, they're, they do their work at the direction of the mayor, so that it's just a different thing. And then when in towns, you know, Massachusetts is is very, uh, unique in the fact that it has a whole bunch of very, very small towns that, uh, have this town style of government that not a lot of other places have. And because of that, you have everything under the, under the sun. We have neighboring communities where the planner doesn't go to planning board. Uh, doesn't go to a planning board meetings because the planning board has told them and the previous planners as well, not to come to to planning board meetings. So you have something like that, that's like right next door. But you have something that, you know, like my situation, which is more typical of what you would find in a lot of other comparable communities where there is, you know, probably, you know, around fifty to sixty percent of the time, they're working with the board. And there are other time, it's really things that are related to the board, but also have other cross, you know, interdepartmental responsibilities.
Right, and I think that that happens a lot with you because you have institutional memory, having worked in town hall for almost eight years. And 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 through at least two town managers or acting town managers, if not more.
So, yeah, so I I think that, so I want to get back to to Nick's comment and also Sally's comment about, is is this the place where we would say try to prevent Brian from being overworked or stretched too thin? And.
Well, that it ends up being a negotiation, because right now it says that he does serve the affordable, the the the, let's list the boards you you are attending to. It's the Select Board, it's the Housing Partnership Board, it's the Historical Commission.
So I I do, um, I don't go to the Housing Partnership Board meetings, but I'm certainly in, you know, close contact with the chair.
So there's a lot, there's a large list here.
Yeah, so I think that, so the question I'm trying to get at is, so there's a there's the reality of what a single person planner can do in terms of just time, a single person planning department. But there's also the reality of needing to work with a large number of people in town government in order to pursue the planning board goals. And so that's a so my, my suggestion is, would be to recognize that I don't know how we can prevent that second part from happening, because that would dilute the ability of Brian to do his job. And so I think what what might be more pragmatic is to look at the, this job description and then try to take out some of the things which are really prescriptive. And so like listing all of the boards that Brian has to meet, I think that's overkill. I think that it's a flexible thing that, for instance, if the boards require his assistance, then that should be something that should be, you know, part of his job description, but he shouldn't have to attend each one of those meetings. And I think that there's a lack of flexibility in some of this that makes it look like he has to do, go to every single possible board. So for instance, I've crossed out a whole bunch of things because, for instance, at the bottom of page two, where it says, you know, manage site plan and special permit processing, permit process. That's already part of his job in terms of reviewing, you know, and another, another, um, bullet point.
Right, I did notice some redundancy, like it would, it could use a strong editing.
Yeah, I think there's redundancy. I think we can take out, you know, having to be to staff Heritage District Commission. I think that's important, but, you know, these are things that attend the majority of historical commission meetings. I don't think that at this point, that is a useful activity for Brian. So I think that there are some duties which, you know, I think that the the state of affairs in town hall in terms of other committees has changed over the years to the point where maybe Brian's, the necessity of Brian being there for them at a really constant level is not required. And I think that we, his position description should reflect that change.
So can I suggest, Diab, that you and one other person on the board sit down with Brian and do like a real roll up your sleeves, working session? What can we cut? Where is there redundancy? What's the hierarchy of duties? You know, the things that absolutely have to happen or at the request of someone else and with planning board approval or whatever, to really shorten it and clarify and eliminate redundancy and put yearly goal type things like, like you could say, it's it's his duty to make sure that every minute of the planning board, minutes of the planning board, going back to the beginning of time is here. Well, that's a project. The the duty is making sure that the planning board minutes are properly, whatever. So it it can, I suggest that you and one other person take this on as a, as an, as an editing project with Brian?
Sure, I think there's, there's, I I I think that's, that's, that's definitely something that needs to be done. But I think there's also, I think, I think the board needs to weigh in on the values and the mission that are implied by the planning, this particular description. And I haven't heard, that's the discussion I'm hoping we could get into is, uh, either, you know, the board says, yeah, this reflects the direction and the vision we have for the planner and the planning board, or no, it doesn't. And so there's a, there's a, there's a, a judgment, I think, that the board has to make, either, you know, as to whether this is really, this stands as, 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 as the appropriate description. And I don't know that we've had that discussion yet, and that's sort of the discussion I'm hoping we can get into. So there's definitely a cleanup, but then there's the philosophy that goes behind this.
It, it's really helpful to have that framing, Deah, and with that framing in mind, would it be permissible to bring this to the next meeting? Um, or the next meeting that it's possible to find time to discuss it? Um, with, with the specific assignment to the board that we identify redundancies, um, put a, put a point on, what did you call it? The philosophy or the?
So, so I can, I, I can certainly, you know, though, I think the point of the, the hope that I will, I guess we were going to get out of this conversation this evening is that I would get enough comments that I would then bring back of another version, you know, with, you know, with those comments incorporated and certain, you know, redundancies, a- all of that. But I think the goal, and Deah, tell me if I'm wrong here, was, was to at least try to have one overarching conversation on, like you said, is this the right direction? And then beyond that, what are then things that we would add or subtract based upon that?
Yes. And so I, 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 it does seem like we are not ready for that discussion this evening.
No, I don't think we are. And, and, and the question that I have is, do we have a choice if there's a number of things? Say it's, say it's forty-five percent of your duties, Brian, um, are um, representing a planning board perspective to other parts of the town? And therefore it takes a lot of your time, say forty-five percent of your time, um, and do we have a choice in that?
Yeah, I think, I think there's certainly, I mean, the planning board does direct, you know, a large majority of my work. I mean, that's.
So if we wanted more than, I'm just using round numbers, fifty-five percent of your time, that would be a thing that we would reflect in the job description?
I mean, personally, I don't, I don't, I don't think it, it does need to, because it doesn't serve much purpose, because maybe one week, you know, it's a large percentage of my time to do something else. And then, and then a whole bunch of other weeks, it's just planning board suffer. Yes, I mean, I, I guess that is, I don't, I don't see the huge value, like I said earlier, of getting to that detailed level within the, uh, within the job description, but yes, do want to get that, uh, detailed in some type of a work plan.
A yearly work plan?
Yeah, something like that, like that's exactly where that belongs.
Well, that's helpful to identify.
Deah, if I could say something, um, so the big picture, my feel of this job description is that it could be cut seventy-five percent of it. I mean, four pages for a job description seems really overkill and not appropriate. And I, in general, I do think that is too prescriptive and draconian and, um, it, it needs to be simplified.
I, I would agree with that. I think that, I mean, the old adage that I didn't have time to write a short letter, so I wrote a long one, uh, that we really need to focus in on what's really, you, you know, we're saying in so many words, the, the more words we have, it's just diluting whatever it is we want to say and, um, but that being what it is, I think it would be helpful to have that, uh, go through that Sally is advocating for, I think.
Why don't, why don't I make?
Or Deah, or.
Yeah, so I will meet, um, so Brian and I will set up a meeting where we will, um, wield editorial pens. And, um, E Ching, if there are some parts that you think are just egregiously over, just shouldn't be there, just mark it up and, you know, uh, Brian, if you could send out, do you have a word version of this? Yes, you must.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, so if you could just send out a word version and people can just go in there and very quickly, if they find something they don't, you know, don't, don't try to, um, make it perfect, just if you find something you think is, just doesn't need to be there, just cut it out or, or mark it out and then send it off to Brian and he and I will go through there and try to, um, make it as simple as possible. And then we'll bring it back to the board. And at that point, the board can look at it and say if it's complete or if it means more.
We could use the, we could use the track changes and.
Yeah, I was gonna say that. If, if everyone knew it can use track changes, I think that would make it hugely, uh.
And then we'll send it to Brian and Brian and we'll send it to Brian and Deah, and then the two of you are going to take a stab at synthesizing all of those comments and edits and, and observations about redundancy or whatever. And organizational suggestions, is that what we do?
And if you have any, any particular thing that you think is missing, just throw it in there and we'll just put it in as an addendum. So, so let's, let's work on this, um, offline. And then, uh, we will bring it back, uh, probably, I don't know what our schedule permit, but I imagine it'll probably be in about four weeks. I wouldn't expect it our next time around. So excellent, we have made some progress.
Just a quick heads up on timing, um, so Form and Place is coming next week.
Yes.
And that's leading up to a June fourteenth event that we were trying to have, um, before school started. So I'm going to be starting to doing some advertising for that. Um, Deah and I just realized today that we had to, we have to do the petitions on that day as well. So the question was, I, um, I think we had figured ninety minutes for the event. Um, with, for, or if, you know, for the listening session for the public for Form and Place for North Main Street. So, um, we were typically gonna start at seven o'clock. Um, but I didn't know, this was more of a logistical question of whether or not, uh, how we're gonna do those petitions or not. That was something I didn't know if we were getting close towards the end of our agenda, but I wanted to talk about that before we ended the evening.
These are petitions before the Board of Appeals, is that correct?
Yeah, these are three petitions that are not, yeah, you know, hugely significant. Uh, one of them is asking for, we were, uh, of even doing it, uh, because it, the addition is less than five hundred square feet, so it's not even a full.
But they still, they still deserve our brief but focused attention.
Right, the, the, so the point was that, um, June fourteenth, um, it's a question of whether or not we wanted to do the petitions before the event or after the event and when we wanted to start, uh, so that I can send this flyer out to, to people. So I didn't know if, I'm sorry to break up the party, Deah, but this was something I was gonna try to do at the beginning, but wasn't here, obviously.
Yeah, um, so may I recommend that we do the Form and Place thing first?
Yes, seven to eight thirty, and then we just meet from eight thirty to nine for whatever business we have.
Yes.
Okay, let's just do that then. Then we'll do a seven o'clock start.
And I, I hate to keep piling on that, but we do need to hear, we need to hear it from, um, not the MSPCA.
The MPIC?
No, no, the, uh.
M A P C?
Oh, M A?
M, M A P C for Holden Street?
M A P C, yeah, sorry, I got dogs on the brain or something. Yeah, so we need to hear about Holden Street prior to June thirtieth, because we do have, we have, we have contracted with them. Um, so we should have that on our agenda as well.
Well, we, um, yeah, we should, we should be meeting twice in June. So, um, a- after this long stretch of six that we have in May. Um, so I think the idea was we were taking the first week of June off.
Yep.
The June seventh, we're not meeting June seventh, we'll meet June fourteenth and then the twenty-eighth, so just the two times, which would be normal.
Yeah.
And what's on the twenty-eighth agenda?
Nothing yet.
Well, so is Holden Street on the agenda for the sixth, the fourteenth?
I mean, it can't be on the fourteenth, so it would have to be on the twenty-eighth. I gotta talk to Josh about that, um.
So M A P C would be on June twenty-eighth to talk about their analysis of the Holden Street property?
That's the, that is the, the draft hope.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we'll, we will find that, uh, so for instance, public outreach and education will be on the twenty-eighth because we've now punched it, I think, for the third time.
So can I ask a question about that? It was very helpful to have this framing conversation in advance of talking about Brian's job description. And perhaps that there could be done by memorandum from the chair, maybe?
We, we can have that conversation right now. We have eight minutes.
We have eight minutes, okay. I didn't know that, that's good.
Yeah, yeah.
Fine, what do you, what do you have in mind?
Uh, so the idea is that, uh, typically the planning board doesn't talk much to the community and the community doesn't know much about the planning board. And so one of the things that I was hoping we could talk about is how do we start engaging with the community? Is it through, um, something, uh, like a quarterly newsletter? Can we, can we have, um, you know, this is a, an idea I had a while ago, which was to have, um, meetings which, which were, you know, dedicated to precinct issues. So we would have a meeting with each precinct or every pair of precincts to talk to people about their local issues. Um, or other planning boards talked about, um, and, you know, this is pre-COVID, is having, you know, community walkthroughs so that we would actually walk with neighbors through communities and understand what their concerns were. So some way of engaging with the community and trying to understand their concerns and also ways of educating about what is, what are the issues before town? What are the strategies? And ways that, um, residents would, could move forward and help us or get more educated about how, how, how the things work in town through the planning board and through town and zoning and such like that. So it's sort of a, 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 you know, a gallant offering of things.
So could it be that, um, perhaps on a rotating basis, uh, i- i- in advance of each planning board meeting, say the previous Thursday or Friday, kind of in co- co- in alignment with the packet being released, that, that, um, the planning board would send a memo out to all those interested? That says, this is a heads up, the Tuesday's planning board meeting is going to talk about A, B, and C. And with regards to A, the question before the board is this, you know, totally objective, just stick to the facts, ma'am. And just send it out as a heads up to people to say, this is what we're going to be talking about. Because a lot of times when you read the agenda, and, and I heard this coming out of the communications study committee, the agendas don't tell the story, they just make a list. And so if people wanted to know more about what we do and how we do it, and they wanted to be educated and informed and participate, sending out a pre-meeting um, uh, explanation of what the agenda is going to cover and what the issues are, something like that.
Yeah, um, so that's, 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 that's kind of what my failed attempt at doing this on a weekly basis for the planning board itself. Um, so that would be along those lines. Yeah, we could do that. I'm wondering, um, we rea- we have, we have a group of people we already send things out to, so we could certainly add this to the packet. Um, I think one of the, as long as it's not taken to be an official agenda, we're okay.
Right, it would be more of a, um, this is in the packet, but then it would say, you know, memorandum from, um, the board. That this is what we're talking about and this is why we're talking about it and this is what we need to consider with regards to this. And, you know, if people are interested in, you know, the chapter and verse references that we need to base our work on. So maybe that's what that memorandum does.
Yeah, I'm just, just sort of thinking about the work involved.
Oh, yeah, no, I would see this taking, it's like three hours of somebody's time before each meeting.
And that's a lot of time.
It is a lot of time.
Um, so I think we can, we can, I think that is a useful thing to do. I, I'm not, I'm just, right now I'm thinking of that I would be the person writing that because I'm the one who's usually working with Brian most closely on the agenda. And, uh, so that would be something that would fall to me and I'm, I'm blocking just a little.
Well, as the vice chairman clerk, I'm offering to help if you wanted to establish a memo that went out before each planning board meeting to interested parties that would say the, these are what we're going to be talking about and these are the chapter and verse that we'll be referring to.
Oh, I, I understand, Sally, and I appreciate your offer. I'm wondering what's going to happen to the next chair and the next clerk? Whether they will still have the same diligence you have. And so, so this is a thing where if we want to establish precedent, um, we need to make sure that the resources are there to, to make it sustainable.
Sustainable.
And so, um, I think that is something we should definitely, that, I think that is a very valuable thing. One of the things I think we might try to do is figure out if we can piggyback on the town managers weekly, whatever you should call it, weekly newsletter. And maybe we could, we could put a paragraph or something in there, um, which, which could be maybe a little less, I don't know. I haven't, I, this is the first time I've been mentioned this in public, so I'm sure a town manager will say, if you do that, everyone else will want to do that.
Well, yes, and it occurs to me that, you know how you have that thing you can sign up with in the town website? And you say, I want to get the town managers letter every week or whatever. We, if we could have a practice of giving the public um, more explanation of what's on the agenda and what will be considering, um, that it would be a link you could subscribe to in that, um, I forget the name of the page where you sign up for things, of where Winchester Aware or whatever.
Alert.
Alert, thank you, thank you, alert.
So I would, I, I, I would, you know, I would like to start smaller. I would like to start by thinking about maybe a quarterly newsletter or something like that.
Would it be retrospective or prospective?
I think we should define that. We should think about what it is that, do we want to, do we want to talk about how past trends have led us to where we are? Do we want to talk about issues that are, that we think are coming up? I don't know. It could be, I think we need to, we need to brainstorm what something like that would look like. We would write, we would say, we would put out a page at most, what can we fit on a page? Um, what sort of, you know, so I think those are, and do we even do a newsletter? I don't know. But those are the ideas I was coming up with with public outreach, so.
And this is all in response to the communications study committee's goal of having everybody tell everybody what's going on?
No, this actually came out before I was on the planning board. I had no freaking clue what anyone in town government did. And I always thought it's strange that there was no real way of talking to people.
Uh, Brian's like Friday meeting notes or Friday updates, you know, it goes out to people other than the planning board. It's like, who gets on that list?
Document here.
And like, could you just send, could you, could people just like subscribe to that?
They do. So that's what happened. I started sending it to, you know, people from the historical commission design review and then, um, you know, T-TAC and then just other ones that I staff, uh, and then other people were like, hey, uh, I heard, you know, this guy get these, you know, can you, can I get on that too?
I get on that list, right.
It's not a ton, you know, it's probably forty people. It's not like this huge outreach thing.
But, but we could put it up on the town website and people so could subscribe to it.
They could subscribe to it. And, and what's the difference between these is this is the stuff that we have to take a vote on. And this is the stuff that we also need to talk about.
Oh, but, but I think that what you're holding in your right hand is the planner notes for the planning board.
Right. Is this the one you were talking about, E Ching?
No.
I was talking about the weekly updates.
Weekly updates.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
So I think that would, I mean, that's, that's, um, I like those because they're shortened to the point. And maybe, maybe something like, you know, Brian's corner on the website or something and, and just drop it there and make it available. And people, if they're interested, could pick it up there. That would be the first step.
Yeah, you're doing that anyway, Brian. So maybe other people just get it.
Yeah, no, we can, you know, expand the set.
Yep.
Brian's corner.
So the update is retrospective. You're, you're giving us an update on what happened and a little bit about what's coming up in terms of dates and stuff like that, right? That's really what I see in the update. You're muted.
Sorry, uh, keep, I'm sorry about that. Um, I didn't, was there a question for me?
Oh, yeah, my question was, so the update, does the update, which is a retrospective document, serve the purpose that Deah, Deah has in mind of educating people and giving them an understanding of what's coming up?
Yeah, I mean, I think I would do it certainly differently and they, uh, if it was kind of more of like a widespread tried, you know, really try to get people to learn about, like, I would just structure it differently and I would probably have not just things that, you know, or this, there are, there are things that are definitely, you know, those weekly updates really are for the planning board and people that are interested in what's going on. I think what Deah's talking about is that's important, but also trying to get other people to really understand what the planning board does. So basically everyone that I am talking to already knows what's going on, it, you know, it's news. They, but they don't need, uh, to be educated, what we're talking about.
So it, it, it does make it a, a case for there to be a quarterly kind of a educational overview kind of a thing.
Right, yeah, I mean, you know, spotlight on what the. Right, yeah, I mean, you know, spotlight on what the planning board, what the planning board has done over the past quarter. And what we find interesting as we look towards the future, you know, like something, you know, something like that of, um. You know, important things that have happened in town development wise, almost like a, you know, town meeting annual report, but instead it's a quarterly report. I think that's what Diab's kind of talking about is having quarterly, almost having quarterly reports.
Yeah, but they would be, you know, things like. Often, for instance, we find interesting articles that talk about changes around the country in terms of. Housing or zoning, and those would be things that you could just drop in a list of links and say, here's some interesting reading for you. You know, here's what's happening elsewhere. Um, so it's more of a, just beginning an interaction. That what, in an informal level, maybe a little formal level, just some way of. Reaching out.
Well, it sounds to me like it's, 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 um, uh, news, news and observations from the chair. And it's a quarterly.
Yeah, it'd be something like quarterly. I would just say from the board. Just, uh, it's because I don't, you know, the, the chair may, again, we want to, I mean, this is, one of the problems with talking about this is that. We have to create the structure to keep it going. Um, otherwise, there's no point in doing it.
Right.
But, uh, I, I just, uh.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think we should have this discussion. Uh, we've, I think we've set, uh, hopefully there's context now for a discussion we have in a few weeks. Um, and uh, I want to note that we are now at nine thirty-four. And uh, we, we are trying to, uh, I think we've done a really good job of, uh, ending close to on time, even if we don't finish our entire.
Said nine forty-five.
It's.
Yeah, I, I think that's a mistake, Sally. That must be a mistake.
No, 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 that was our subtle plan to keep us going for another fifteen minutes. I blew it. I blew it. Okay, so, um. I think it's great time to adjourn for the evening and, uh, I think, uh, I would welcome a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Yeah, is there a second?
Second, the motion.
Excellent. So why don't we have a roll call vote? Uh, E Ching?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
Nick?
Hi.
Sally?
Hi.
And Diab's as high as well. Uh, thanks very much to Win Cam for, uh.
And Xena and Rich for sticking with.
Rich, you are still with us. I hope you guys had a lot of fun. Uh, thanks to people who tuned in for our discussions, to all of the, um. Neighbors who showed up. Thanks to our town planner, Brian S. Kelly, uh, which.
And Win Cam.
And thank you to Brian Manter. I don't know if he's still around, our assistant town engineer. I hope our recording secretary is having a great vacation. And uh, thank you, everyone out in Peanut Gallery. And we'll see you all. In one week, in one week, on May thirty-first.
Oh, is that a hand raised or is that a goodbye?
No, that was, uh, I was trying to count.